Five seconds. There we go.
There we go.
All right. Good evening. This is the June 24th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, Kimberly Rather, 268 Main Road, appeal number 2021-024, has asked for an adjournment to July 8th. Do I hear a motion?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. We have a reserved decision. Did you give him his copy?
That's right here. Do you want me to give it to you?
I move the appeal number 2021-017, Amy Beth Stern, 860 Pondview Road, Riverhead. For variance and/or relief to chapter 301, section 11, where proposed front yard setback is 41.3 and minimum required is 50 feet, where proposed side yards are 18.6 and 21.7, and the minimum required is 25 feet. Where combined side yards is 41.3 and the minimum requirement is 55 feet. Where proposed impervious surface is 19.8 and the maximum permitted is 15. Be granted with the following conditions: They shall be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches and amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. Do I hear a motion?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. See, appeal's been granted, but there are certain conditions that you have to meet. And from there, best of luck.
Thank you very much.
You're quite well.
Good luck.
All right, young lady, you're on.
Appeal 2021-025, David Kope, 1455 Sound Avenue, Calverton, tax map number 659-231, APZ zoning. For variances under relief from chapter 301, section 37A1C, where proposed side yard and rear yard are 15.9 feet and 19 feet respectively, and minimum required for an accessory structure is 20 feet.
And who's to be heard on this matter? Step up to the microphone. If you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth? Nothing but the truth, so help you God. State your name and your address.
My name is David Kope Jr., 1455 Sound Avenue, Beatty Hall.
Let's hear your story.
We would like to put up a structure for shade in our backyard. Um, that's pretty much it. It's for our pool house. We put a pool house, we put a pool in, we'd like to put a pool house in.
Okay.
So when you say shade...
So, open structure.
It's an open structure?
Open structure, and the back half of the structure is for storage, for pool equipment and stuff like that, floats and miscellaneous stuff.
No second story?
No.
So it's just a...
Pretty much an open structure, and the back five feet of it is going to be a storage area.
Okay. Okay.
That's my architect on Zoom.
Hello, architect.
Does that say unmute? Can you... Ask to unmute.
Ask to unmute.
Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Ah, we can hear you now.
Awesome.
If you're just raising your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth? Nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
My name is Tina Paris. My address is 490 Wheeler Road in Hop-on, New York.
You have the floor.
All right, um, I'm just reiterating what Mr. Kope says, in that they are looking to establish a 20-foot-by-20-foot open structure. On the back end of it is going to be intended for storage for all the additional pool equipment requirements, so they don't store it in the house, because a lot of it can be caustic. Um, and it's just going to be, um, the paving is going to match the rest of the exterior. And really, the intent, one of the reasons why we are approaching an offsetback is because we're trying to maintain the aesthetic of the backyard. So we're, we are centering the pavilion over the pool. That's one of the reasons why it's, it's approaching the stepback. And, um, and yeah, and that's pretty much it. I mean, the rest of it is, is intended for shade for those who will be enjoying the pool, because there's, um, you know, he has the one garage, but then, and then there's a bit of a walk to the house. But this offers an opportunity to expand the pool area so that they can enjoy some shade time when they're out of the pool. And that, that's the reason for the pavilion.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Anyone online? We do have a, a letter from the next-door neighbor. Where their, uh, I believe you've seen it. Is that correct? Have you seen it? You want to address it?
Uh, who am I supposed to?
It's, it's, I'm not going to, I'm not going to...
You don't have to. Um, you know, you have a, you've done a nice landscaping job there, and, um, I don't think anything else, else has to be said. Correct me for a moment, you responded also in writing. Is that correct?
Yes, my wife.
Okay. Nobody else to be heard on this matter? Online or Zoom or in person? Mr. Panchak, you have nothing to say? That sounds good. Okay, let's see your room.
Mr. Chairman. I moved at the appeal of David Kope, 1455 Sound Avenue, Calverton, SCTM number 600-59-231, APZZ zoning. Variance is under relief from chapter 301, section 37A subdivision 1 subdivision C, where proposed side yard and rear yard are 15.9 feet and 19 feet respectively, and where minimum required for accessory structure is 20 or 20 feet. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches and with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. And your appeal's been approved, so, um, in about two weeks, all the paperwork will be done. Best of luck. You have a beautiful piece of property there, and obviously, you're taking good care of it, so.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina. Bye, guys.
Adios. Well, why you all?
All right, have a good night.
You too.
You have to stay for the whole meeting.
We sell popcorn, popcorn and soda in the back.
Appeal 2021-028, Patricia Panchak, 70 Parker Road, Riverhead, tax map number 61635, RA40 zoning. For variances under relief from chapter 301, section 11, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 44.5%, maximum permitted is 15%. Project reduces current impervious surface, which is presently 49.1%. Where proposed side yard setback is 7.5 feet to dwelling and 6.8 feet to the proposed deck, and minimum required is 25 feet for principal structures and 20 feet for accessory structures. Where proposed front yard is 19.6 feet to the roofed over unenclosed porch, and 22.9 feet to the dwelling, and minimum required is 50 feet. Where proposed rear yard setback is 29.5 feet, and minimum required is 60 feet, and where proposed detached garage is five feet from the rear and side property lines, and minimum required is 20 feet.
As always, Mr. DeLuca, it's a pleasure to sway you. Do you swear to tell the truth? Nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please. State your name and your address.
Jim DeLuca, 12 Linda Lane East, Riverhead, New York. I'm the architect for the proposed structure. The first thing I wanted to submit, which I don't think you have, because of the extent now that the renovation is going to go through, uh, we went back to the health department, and we have health department approval on the, uh, new stru, on this, the new structure. Sorry. So you have.
Wonderful.
Basically, we're here because of two reasons. First reason is, is that, uh, when the construction started on the, uh, the proposed dwelling, we were going to maintain the first floor foundation and then gut the inside and take the roof, uh, roof, existing roof off. Uh, when they started on the construction, they found out there was a lot of termite damage, so, uh, the building inspector came down and advised that, um, we have to come back to the zoning board of appeals, because he's removing the whole, uh, first floor and the floor structure. The existing foundation is going to stay. And we're going to rebuild the house exactly the way it was before on the original permit and on the original zoning board of appeals approval. So that's the first reason we're here. And that's why we went and got the Suffolk County Health Department, because they considered it, uh, over 50% renovation, so we had to go back and get the health department and come here again. The second reason why we're here is the owner decided to add on a rear deck. It's above, uh, because the elevations vary so deeply from the backyard to the front yard. He wanted to have a deck that he could walk out of the first floor and, uh, have a place to sit. And, um, that's the reason why we're here. So the, all the setbacks remain the same, except the rear yard from the original 43.5 feet, now it's 29.5 feet to the rear of the proposed 14 by 28, uh, first floor deck. And when I say first floor, it's not at the foundation level, because the back of the foundation is exposed for the garage door. It comes out of the first floor. And that's the reason why we're here. The impervious area hasn't changed from the original approval. The size of the house hasn't changed. The elevations haven't changed. Everything remains the same, except we're adding the deck on and rebuilding the house from the foundation up. Also, there's a note on the disapproval letter or denial letter about the, uh, front porch. Basically, if you, and I have the definition here, if you look under definitions in the, uh, from chapter 301, and you look under building line, they exclude unenclosed porches, uh, on the first, uh, first floor, projecting not more than five feet, which the proposed porch does not project more than five feet on the first floor, the front entry porch.
Okay.
And basically, that's it.
So even though it's in the letter, Jim, we should pass it?
Pardon me?
Even though it's noted?
Yeah.
We should still grant it?
Yes.
Because that was his interpretation.
Yeah.
So...
Okay.
I, I don't see a problem with that.
All right. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Please, step up. And if you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth? Nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do so.
Please state your name and your address.
Excuse me. My name is Keith Fowley. I'm the next-door neighbor to the property they're talking about. I live at 58...
To the south or the north?
To the south.
Okay.
Uh, I was present by the Zoom meeting last August, and I objected to a lot of things that were granted. However, my objections were not sustained, and they were going to go ahead and build a two-story house and advance it over to my property. Uh, nothing I can do about that. But what happened, when Mr. DeLuca just said elevations are the same, he didn't tell you that that house is being demolished, and the poured foundation they put in, couldn't help but notice, it's two feet higher than the existing foundation. When they knocked down this house, it's my understanding, and I, maybe I'm wrong, according to Mr. DeLuca, they intended to put two rows a block around the whole thing to bring the new house up higher. It's already higher than mine right now. That's why I was concerned about the privacy. And when he says, the main thing I don't want is this giant deck in the backyard, where I could show you a picture on my phone, where my backyard, my deck, has zero privacy. And that deck is going to encompass the whole width of the house and out 15 feet, to the point where I have a six-foot fence, where that deck is going to be higher, just due to the elevations of the property, is going to be higher than my six-foot fence. And it's only going to be six and a half feet from my property. They could throw a cup of coffee, go like that, and end up on my property. So I don't think that that deck is appropriate at all. The people that live behind the Panchaks on Center Street, they just moved in. They're not even aware that this deck is going in. Their whole backyard will now be looked down on as well. And...
Their backyard will be looking down on the Panchaks?
No, the Panchak's deck will be looking down on them. And they're not even notified, because they just bought the house. And, I mean, I could go on and on. I mean, the way he calculates 44%, it's 60 by 100-foot lot, it's 6,000 square feet. The house is 901, the garage is 345, the driveway, according to his calculations, is 1472, and the rear deck is 392. That goes up to 3,110 feet. If you do simple math, it comes up to 50, 51.84% coverage. And I don't think that should be allowed either. I'm already got a lot of drainage coming in, and I'm told that it's going to be captured by these basins that were going to be put in since last August. Well, it's not. It's still coming over my way.
Have the basins, have the basins been put in yet?
No, sir. Matter of fact, the blacktop, he said that...
So if the basins be, are put in and they cover the water?
I don't know if it's going to work or not.
Well, that's why engineers are there. That's...
With all due respect, before they went for their first variances, I think an engineer should have looked at that house to see if they could put a second addition on it and set out to demolish it. And if they have to demolish it, do they need to get a permit to demolish it? And do they check for the asbestos shingles?
So, Mr. Fowley, I'm looking at the survey that Nathan Corwin did.
Yes.
He claims that the proposed lot coverage is going to be 44.5. The existing lot coverage is 49.1, so they're actually decreasing the square footage. Now, this is based on Mr. Corwin's calculation. He's the surveyor.
Well, if you, if you just add up, Mr. DeLuca's size of the house is 901...
Right.
...point six. The garage is 345. The driveway is going to be changed, so it's going to get down to 1472.
It's 915 on the survey here.
Well, Mr. DeLuca has it.
I'm just going by what the surveyor put on the survey. Um, so I don't know what your calculations, I, I'm just looking at the surveyor's calculations. So, um, I, I would think Mr. DeLuca, um, went on, went with these calculations for his appeal. Correct, James?
Exactly. He had the asphalt driveway at 1897.
That's the existing.
That's the existing.
The new one is 915. It's almost 50% I would say difference.
So, that being the case, and I'm, I'm taking Mr. Corwin's calculations, because he is a trained professional, um, they're actually reducing the lot coverage.
By 282 square feet?
So, I, I know that you opposed the last project, because you didn't want people looking in your second-story window, but we did approve it anyway. So, do you have a solution for this? I mean, this is a single and separate lot that is non-conforming, like most of the lots in that area. Do you have any better solution, so that these people can continue to build their home? Do you have a, or you just don't want it and that's it?
I don't want the deck.
So the last time, you didn't want the second-story window, but now you don't want the deck?
I still don't want it, but you already passed that.
All right.
But they're going to go up two feet, so I'm going to get losing more privacy.
So this much?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's going to bring the deck up even higher. And do you have the proposed lot coverage for the asphalt driveway at 1472?
No.
Actually, no, we have it as the proposed 915.
Well, can I show you the Corwin survey from February 20th, 2020? That's what you based your last decision on.
Um, you certainly could submit it to the clerk here.
What's the last one we have?
September 25th.
I just wanted to point out, whatever number you're coming up with, the 901...
These were revised by date. You could look on the top right.
Did he write?
Um, they went back to, um, April of 2020, and then Mr. Corwin came out and did multiple modifications, and the last one was revised May 25th.
Right. This is last one.
2019. That's what we have right there.
But it's revised. See, it's revised? And where's the numbers difference?
That, these numbers are different than those.
And the survey's taken... The proposed lot coverage, these are existing, so make sure the existing match up.
They're way over.
To existing lot coverage. 18875, that, that's the same.
I'm talking about this number. 34 versus 29.
I, yeah, I don't know what happened there.
I don't know what this is.
Uh, maybe James can explain it.
Jim, you want to take a look at this and explain it to us, please?
The existing and proposed, they differ from the survey we're looking at, Mr. DeLuca.
And you can sit right there, Jim.
Yeah, the whole back is not, this is an old one. The new one, all that back...
What is the same date?
Is, is, is eliminated.
Wait a minute. They have the same date on, the 2000, the, September 25th, 2019.
The one, this one doesn't show the deck.
Yeah, so it's a, it's an upgraded site plan on the existing survey.
So if it shows the deck, it should be even more.
Huh? This is an old, this is the...
Right, that's what the deck is.
Yeah. All, all this back is, is taken out. That's, that's pervious.
Okay. I, I understand that.
So you don't have a copy of the new?
That is the newest one.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. No.
That, that's probably the latest one you have, but what the town was submitting was a different document.
We didn't even go with this one.
That's the one you went with to get one approved in the office?
No, it's not.
No.
I can't say I did or didn't, because I don't have it with me. But I...
I have the first one here.
I mean, I could tell you, all the years I've been dealing with Mr. DeLuca, he's always upfront, and he doesn't try to deceive anybody. Uh, there may be some documents that will pass back and forth, but if you want to take a look at this one, which...
All, all this now...
Yeah, I have it.
Everything has been eliminated. All this is pervious.
Right. Okay.
Where is that?
Go show him compared to that, James.
Come up to the desk.
Go to the table, Mr. Foley, and just take a look.
Because the mics are working down there, Mr. Foley.
The driveway's only here. All this is pervious now. This thing, we didn't even use the survey. That was the original survey.
That was 25th, 2019?
Yeah. This is February 10th, 2021.
Where do you see that?
Right here.
His thumb is on it.
Oh, they redid it again.
Revised site plan.
Because we said we were going to take all that stuff out in the back at the meeting the last time, and we, it's...
This was just a floating dock that belonged to the tenant, and so was that, that they, he was...
And his asphalt, this was asphalt here, this, all this is coming out. This is a survey.
It may be coming out, but it's not happening.
No, Mr. DeLuca's...
Excuse me, it's coming out.
It's coming out. The, the, the survey with tonight's application is showing that it's coming out. And there will be a final survey done once the job is completed.
This is what is proposed, and this is going to be the final survey.
But, but there will be a final survey again by the, by the surveyor.
And we have to go by these percentages.
And you have to go by that.
What's the elevation of the deck, anyway?
Pardon me?
The elevation of the deck?
Even with the first floor.
Okay.
Well, slightly down, it's four inches down...
Okay.
From the finished floor, or the first floor. But the percentages, we're not changing any of them. This is, uh, and matter of fact, on the survey that we, we, we handed in, we have the drainage, and you'll see the survey that was approved by the health department that I just gave in. There's two drainage rings that are put in the driveway, and we have a catch basin right under the deck to pick any water up that rolls around before it gets to this gentleman's property that gets put into the two drainage rings that were put in the driveway.
Okay. And this is going to be 6.5 feet off of my property.
That's what it has here.
Well, I certainly, I couldn't smoke. He's going to do what he's going to do. He was approved last time. There's nothing much I can do about it. I have a picture here, if you want to see my deck, what it's going to do to my house.
This survey...
We've been to here. We've been to the property.
Yeah, mine even, was not even used for the first variance. It was revised. This is, this was the original survey.
Well, I'm in, I'm in the dark, then. You never provided it.
Oh, I most certainly did. It's online. Matter of fact, the, the...
Clerk?
Secretary to the Board gives out, when people call, you, you just go online, and all the documentation that was submitted for this variance, previous variance, is all online. Matter of fact, I sent you a letter...
With this attached?
Excuse me, I sent you a letter, and on the letter, it said, "If you have any questions or any concern with my personal telephone number for you to call me," and everybody within the perimeter adjacent to that property was notified by certified mail, unless they rejected it. Just as you were notified, the person to the left, behind, to the front, to the other side, were all notified. It has to be seven days. I sent it out probably 16 days prior to the meeting to make sure that you would, everyone would get notified.
Well, this was mailed to me.
No, it wasn't.
How do you think I got it?
Well...
Who mailed it to you?
This, no, this past mailing? No, it wasn't.
Not this past one, the one in August.
This is the one that was on, and it's online.
It could be, but I'm just...
No, not, not could be. It is online.
Okay.
How about we, we send you the new one? That's online. Can we have your email address, and we can send it to you?
I'll send it, I, I, listen, I believe it's there. I'm not blind, but I still just disagree with the fact that they want this deck, that big in the back, that close to my house.
Excuse me.
That's unreasonable.
How close is your deck off that line? How close is your deck to that line?
Well, you said you were down there. I mean, I don't know...
Well, I didn't measure it. You're telling me how close to this. I want to know how, is it, it's talking about six foot eight inches. Their deck is going to be off the line. How close are you to that?
Oh, it's probably got to be 30 feet.
30 feet?
Yeah, it's from here to...
No, I understand that.
So you're 36 somewhat feet away from their deck?
Yes, but they're up here...
And you're down.
And I'm down there. I don't look at their deck, they look at me.
And you have foliage in between the-
No. Michael Pancheck ripped it all out.
Are you, do you plan on putting, Jim? Do your clients plan on putting any kind of buffer there as far as arbivites?
That's a yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Jim, can you answer that to the mic, please?
And if you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth? Nothing but the truth, so help me God?
Yes, I do.
And if you, certainly, your name and address.
Patricia Pancheck, and right now I live at eight thousand court in Riverhead.
Okay. So let's hear what your plans are for the-
Well, I would like some type, I mean, there is a tree or two there. There's a couple of trees there. So, and I will put anything up. If you want arbivites up, I can put arbivites up.
Well, we are, we want to-
I don't, I don't really see the problem, but it's, because it's been, except for the deck, it's been like this. The drainage has been the same for the last seventy years. My grandmother got that house about seventy years ago. There is no difference now with the drainage than there was then.
He's objecting to the deck being there, so if screening was put up and he can't see into your deck and you can't see onto his deck, would that be, would that be agreeable?
I'll put something up, yeah.
Okay. That's it? Thank you.
And as long as he can take down the part of his fence that's not on his property and on town property, so I don't have to look at the back of the fence that's on town property, that's fine with me too. The property line, your fence goes up to the street, and that's not part of the property.
Were you all all right since you brought it up? Mr., I wasn't gonna-
You gotta go to the microphone. Right there.
I wasn't going to bring it up, but-
But now he has.
But now she has, so for the first, for the first block, where my house is the first one, then Pan checks, then this fellow Roland and his wife just bought it. And then you have what used to be a little store and Amanda Furniture.
Two structures.
Two structures. She tried to combine, separate them, but I don't think the town left. They're all big lots, but basically, if you look at my front lawn, her front lawn, everyone's front lawn, just on that first block is part of Reeves Park. It was when they made it nineteen twenty-three. That was set aside for pa-, as parking, so you could access the park. Back then, you'd have a horse and buggy, and it was never used. So they built it, and everyone on this block treats it as their own. Like their driveway goes across it, they have bushes out on the front of it. And everyone does. Because no one's ever going to use it for parking to walk down to the beach. It can't be used for anything but recreation. Now, when Mr. DeLuca said he's just going out a few feet, he checks off no on all the boxes on the application. Is it attached to Parkland? Well, he's wrong. And his survey's wrong. Because Park Road- May I show you my original survey?
Doesn't matter. We have a survey that-
Well, we have the survey of today. Never mind the original survey.
The survey today shows Park Road starts at the end of their property. It does not. Park Road goes, that, that's not Park Road on your survey. That's, that's Reeves Park.
So what are you saying?
They're going to encroach on Parkland by putting on their front patio.
Ah, you know, I, I, I think, I don't think so. I don't think so. They have, they have a legitimate survey showing their property, and it's not on Park Road.
The code allows and exempts five feet because of the porch.
I'm just saying, if you'd like to see my survey.
No, no.
It's the same company. It shows you that that-
What year?
What?
What year?
When I bought the house in two thousand, two thousand. This has been in existence since nineteen twenty-three.
Well, we get a batch of maps filed-
Well, we have an up-to-date survey of the property.
But I'm telling you, it's incorrect, and you won't believe me.
Those maps were laid out and filed in the Suffolk County Clerk's office prior to zoning. So Reeves Park, yes, is a subdivision, but technically not under zoning law. Those lots are all undersized. They never even complied with our zoning-
Agreed.
Ever. So they're all undersized lots. You're going to have these situations in these small communities with small lots. You're going to have people's decks looking at each other. Only thing you could really do is have a buffer. They've agreed to do that. I say we move on. That's all you can do, Keith.
I'm talking about her now wanting my fence down.
She's, you don't have to take your fence down, all right? Leave it.
Are they going to put up arbivites that, I mean, I'm seventy years old. I don't think I'm going to make a hundred. I mean, by the time these arbivites get up that high-
You can't worry about stuff like this, though, if you want to live longer.
Well, I care, I think you'd care about your privacy in a house.
Of course, we all do. But you should see my arbivites. They're like fifteen feet tall now.
Well, if she puts, if she agrees to put in grown-
I said she would.
Arbivites.
We'll actually put it in the condition. How's that?
Good. And as long as she means, she trims them, they don't blow over in my property.
Well, she'll trim her side. All right, we'll put that in the condition.
All right.
Plus, a new house is going to lift up the neighborhood.
Who has a final reading on this?
The two feet last time, a-
Let the doctors up a little bit.
Didn't notice that it was rotted, and it had to come down.
Yes.
But where, where, where do they go for the demolition?
Understanding that arbivite will be-
That's part of his application.
So that goes to back there?
The building inspector already has it. Knowing that's the normal process for construction, he put in there that it's going to be taken down and then rebuilt. It's all part of the plans that are there already.
Do I have any further recourse if the arbivites don't?
They're in, they're conditioned in the, in the variance. So when the building inspector goes out to do an inspection based on a new final survey, they'll check then. And it's up to the building inspector to make sure he checks the arbivites. Okay?
All right, they're going to be big ones.
Well, they'll grow.
Well, they'll grow.
Love it. You're going to have a brand-new house next to your house, Mr. Foley.
I'd rather have had the old house with them just painting it and maintaining it instead of renting it out to a guy that just-
Well, that's not going to happen, so.
And the house was eaten away by termites, so they had to, they had to do what they had to do.
You want termites coming across?
They can make a tunnel for you.
I know. I think, yeah, to my house. I, I think, I think, though, that the consideration, when I thought I lost everything last year, was as far as this house could go. Now it's going more towards me. Just the back of the deck.
I, I think, I think we've reached a inequitable situation for both guys.
There's a, I have to say, a resolution.
And let's, let's have a reading. There's houses that are three stories across the street. Isn't that correct?
They, yes, but they own from one street to the other, and the other one's really an alley.
But those houses are taller than yours.
What?
Those houses are taller than yours.
Stop the heat, put the brakes on.
What?
Will you guys settle down?
Enough. Let's have a reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of Patricia Pancheck, Seventy Park Road, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map, number six hundred sixteen three five, RA forty zoning for variances and the relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven, where proposed impervious surface coverage is forty-four point five percent and a maximum permitted is fifteen percent. The project reduces current impervious surface, which is presently forty-nine point one percent. Where proposed side yard setback is seven point five feet to dwelling and six point eight feet to proposed deck. And minimum required is twenty-five feet for principal structures and twenty feet for accessory structures, where proposed front yard is nineteen point six feet to the roofed over unenclosed porch